Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, July 1st, 2025. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I did not even see the child here and I went, "What is that?" Doing the pledge. We love kids, it's just fine.
Yeah, no. By all means.
It's all good. Please call a roll.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Novak.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
Thank you. All right, why don't we adopt this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Geisler and a second by Novak. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. And we are up to the minutes from the June 17th meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Butler.
I move that council approve the minutes from the June 17th, 2025 meeting. Second?
Motion by Butler, a second by Carlson. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Abstained.
Yep, and those minutes are approved. One abstention, Councilmember Novak. And we have six items on our consent agenda this evening. And where is it? What happened to my numbers? There we go, there we go. The first one, item two on your agenda this evening, is to accept the right-of-entry agreement with the Coon Rapids Property LLC. We're looking for a right-of-entry agreement that will allow the city to enter onto the property for the purpose of maintaining the water main system, including hydrant flushing and exercising of the gate valves. Such an agreement is standard for a new commercial development. And this is for Coon Rapids Property LLC on the old BP site at 2825 Coon Rapids Boulevard. So we're looking to accept the attached right-of-entry agreement with Coon Rapids Property LLC for the Coon Rapids Strip Mall development. The next item on our consent agenda is to approve a therapeutic massage enterprise license for massage by Rachel Ann LLC, 12725 Riverdale Boulevard Northwest. Ms. Turner currently holds a massage enterprise license at 12685 Riverdale Boulevard, and she is now submitting an application to move her business to 12725 Riverdale Boulevard inside Soli Salon. She's paid the background investigation and license fee, provided proof of the required liability insurance, and submitted proper educational documentation. Approval is contingent upon a successful background investigation. So we're looking to approve the issuance of a therapeutic massage enterprise license to massage by Rachel Ann LLC located at 12725 Riverdale Boulevard Northwest pending a successful background investigation. Next item on our consent agenda is to accept the 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. The city council held a work session just this evening, July 1st, to review the 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, the ACFR, with the city's external auditors, Clifton Larson Allen, LLP. Once approved, an electronic copy of this report, along with a condensed summary report, will be made available on the city's website following council acceptance. The report will be submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association for consideration in the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Program, and the city has participated in and received recognition from this program since 1975. So we're looking to accept the annual comprehensive financial report for the year ended December 31st, 2024. Next item on our consent agenda is to receive the schedule of electronic payments. Staff has prepared the attached list of electronic payments processed since the last council meeting, and we're looking to receive the schedule of electronic payments from 6/12/2025 to 6/25/2025. Next item on our consent agenda is to adopt Resolution 25-81, Accepting Donations and Business Sponsorships. And we have, I'm just gonna actually, I'm just going to list the companies and the associations that have donated or sponsored an event. Coon Rapids Youth Hockey Association, Coon Rapids Police Association, Coon Rapids Super Senior Club, Papa Murphy's Pizza, Coon Rapids Crime Prevention Association, Dick's Sporting Goods, Coon Rapids Crime Prevention Association, North Star, Towing and Service Center, Peppin Manufacturing Incorporated, Laura Dorinsky, Charitable Minnesota, Premier Health Chiropractic, Xfinity, Elaine Stulk, Coon Rapids Community Strength Foundation, Coon Rapids Super Senior Club, AARP Tax Aid Program, and then we've got several anonymous donors. And we would just really like to thank all of the donors and businesses that supported our events and programs, for which would not be possible without that support. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 25-81 to accept contributions made to the city between April 1st and June 30th, 2025. And then item seven on this evening's agenda, which is the sixth and final one on our consent agenda, is to adopt Resolution 24-82, Establishing the City Manager's Salary. And this is a summary from our closed meeting. On June 17th, the city council held a closed meeting pursuant to Minnesota statute for the purpose of conducting the city manager's performance review. In attendance at this closed meeting were Mayor Cook, all council members except for Councilmember Novak, and city manager Matt Stemwell. During the closed meeting, the city council discussed the city manager's job performance during the previous year, and the city council also discussed the terms of the city manager's employment agreement. Upon the conclusion of the performance review and compensation discussion, the city council agreed to adjust city manager Matt Stemwell's compensation package, and the attached resolution establishes the city manager's annual base salary at $243,650, retroactively effective to the city manager's employment anniversary date of June 17th, 2025. And the city council was further agreeable to adjusting the city manager's deferred compensation contribution to $5,000 annually effective this year. All other components of his compensation and employment contract will remain unchanged. So we need to, we're looking to adopt Resolution 25-82, Establishing the City Manager's Salary. And that should be the last item on our consent agenda.
Your honor?
Councilmember Novak?
I move to accept the consent agenda.
Second?
We have a motion by Novak and a second by Butler. Discussion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to congratulate the city on a clean audit report this year, and for having, thanking CLA for their partnership and getting it completed as well. So looking forward to having that published for the public to see, but good job to the city staff again. Thank you.
Councilmember Carlson?
First question for Mr. Patzner. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Patzner, that mean we're getting closer to getting rid of that BP?
Councilmember Carlson, that is correct.
Wonderful. Can't wait. Can't wait till that thing disappears.
I'd just be happy if they mowed, you know? Even that would help.
And then, Mr. Mayor, to echo what Councilmember Geisler said, boy, it sure was nice to have, you know, to hear that financial report and to know that we're on the right course. And we've been on the right course for quite a while, and it's just nice to see that, that we're still on the right course.
And I'm very happy we're continuing on that course.
Yes.
With our city manager renewal of his contractor here. And part of that is, I recall you bringing in Ashley, and I, and so, that whole package, I'm just very, very thankful, you know? We get all the great kudos over the finances, and we're thrilled that you're gonna be here as our city manager, and well deserved. Thank you. Anything else? Any other comments or questions on the consent agenda? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And the consent agenda is adopted. Item eight is to consider planning case number 25-7, Consider a Subdivision, Variance, and Lot Split, 851 84th Lane Northwest, Anissa Cravens. Anissa? Anissa?
Anissa.
Anissa. That wasn't even, three tries, I was wrong. Mr. Patzner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. So before you tonight, I do have a request for a lot split and a subsequent subdivision variance for the property at 851 84th Lane Northwest. The applicant is related to the owner of the home, and the owner is hoping to split their residential lot, which is a single-family lot in the LDR 1 zoning district, into two lots and build a new home on the second new lot, which would be parcel B. And the variance request is for the width of the new lot, which is required to be at 100 feet. However, the proposed new lot would only be at 81 feet of width, and that is measured at the 40-foot structure setback of the lot. So the proposed new lot is a wedge-shaped lot, meaning that it gets wider as you go further back on the lot. At 40 feet, it's not at 100 feet, which is required. So they are requesting a variance for that element of the lot. This is a bit closer look at what the lot looks like right now on 84th Lane, and it is home to one single-family home right now, and then the northern half of the lot is currently not utilized for any structures. So the applicant would be splitting that northern section of the lot off for a new home. And I did bring up this picture in the slideshow just to kind of show a little bit closer, or a little bit with bolder colors and a little bit easier to read what the proposed new lot would look like. So I am showing the red line there being the new lot line between the lots, the yellow line showing the width measurement at the 40-foot setback, and then if you can read it, the 40-foot setback in green. So that's where the width would be measured for all of the lots in this neighborhood at that 40-foot setback. And I did include all of the dimensions of the lots, both lots, showing that they are otherwise in conformance with the LDR 1 zoning district. Lot B, which is the new lot, would be 22,000 square feet, which is well above the 15,000 square foot minimum, and the proposed home on the lot would meet all of the required setbacks. So the only item of the proposal that is not in conformance with the LDR 1 zoning district is that width, that the 40-foot setback line. The proposed home would meet all setbacks from all lot lines, and the width issue would not then be pushing the home closer to any adjacent lots or anything like that. Just for some context within the neighborhood, and generally, you know, bringing what's being proposed into context, the neighborhood does have some other lots with a similar shape, wedge-shaped lots, fronting cul-de-sacs. I've circled some of those lots in red, lots that are similar in size to the proposed lot, or smaller. And then I did show in yellow the width measurements of a few other lots in the neighborhood that are also less than 100 feet wide at the 40-foot setback. And the vast majority of these lots do widen out to be at least 100 feet wide further back, but at the setback, they are not. And then I've also provided the area width and depth of many of the adjacent lots, which I'm not going to go over in detail, but one of the takeaways of this is that there are other lots that are generally the same size, shape, width, depth as the proposed parcel B as part of this application. So with that, I did provide proposed findings of fact related to the variance request. It's unusual, I know, that the council hears a request for a variance, but a subdivision variance is meant to be brought before the city council rather than the Board of Adjustment. And generally, the findings that need to be considered are, does it meet the intent of the LDR 1 zoning district? Does it cause any issues for public safety? Is the variance in response to a unique circumstance? Is what's being proposed a reasonable use? Is the unique circumstance not created by the actions of the applicant, and is there an unusual hardship or practical difficulty on the property? And staff do believe that all of these findings would be met, and I would be happy to go into any of those in detail on request. But with that, city staff are proposing, or are recommending, and the planning commission did also recommend unanimously approval of the requested subdivision variance, as well as approval of the resolution for the lot split, subject to a few conditions, notably that the variance be approved, that drainage and utility easements, the standard five-foot and 10-foot drainage and utility easements be dedicated, and that the new home abide by all of the Merco regulations as this lot is within the Mississippi River critical area. So that's all I have for a presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Patzner, would you go back to that image? Just the last image, you had that one? Because I know, I watched the planning commission, and the neighbors spent quite a bit of time talking about the setbacks of the homes there. And now, there's some very unusual lot shapes that required those setbacks the way they are, and you got setbacks anywhere from, gosh, 97 feet to 150 feet of those other ones. Oh, here we go. Sorry, I have notes, you know? But this one will be 40 feet, correct? And on the opposite, exactly opposite side of the cul-de-sac, the home, the driveway isn't on the cul-de-sac, but that one is exactly 40 feet off the cul-de-sac as well. That the side of the property is 40 feet off the cul-de-sac. So it's, this wouldn't be the first one on that cul-de-sac, and the home that's on the lot split is 56 feet, so it's, I don't know. I, I, I get it, I, you know, you like things how they are, but it just seems like it really conforms well to our LDR 1. And we still get over 22,000 square feet, and I am in support of it.
Your honor?
Councilmember Novak?
I move to approve the Resolution 25-80, approving the proposed lot splits, subject to the stated conditions. Would you like me to read those out?
Yes, I would. I think in order to do that, I don't know what order the planning commission took it in, but I think we'd also have to approve the variance with the stated findings, and we probably would read those all out. So I would suggest that we approve the variance first.
True.
And then, if that's council's intention, of course, and then go ahead and approve the lot split.
That being the case, I would move to approve the requested variance as part of planning case 25-7.
Second?
You still want him to say based on the above six findings?
That would be, that would be preferred, thank you.
Okay, so that was the motion, and our second is on above six findings.
Second amendment, yes.
Yes, secondary, yes. All right, is there a discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Grischoviac?
Going back to that one picture that you had referenced, is, so the house isn't shown there, but there's gonna be a house in there, and it's gonna be orientated where it's, you know, going kind of deeper. Are we in compliance with the side yard setbacks from the other property, property lines with that configuration? Is there anything unique there? Are they right on the lines, or are they?
Councilmember Grischoviac, the proposed home would be right on the side setback lines of the very front corners where the setback is, or where the lot is the narrowest, but it is within the 15-foot side setback, so generally, no variance would be required for anything like that. That would be in conformance with the LDR 1 zoning standards.
Okay, that's the only confirmation I needed.
Any other comments or questions on that? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. Go ahead, Councilmember Novak, you want to run with that next one?
Certainly. Move to approve Resolution 25-80, approving the proposed lot split, subject to the following conditions. One, the previous approval of the requested variance as part of planning case 25-7. Two, new drainage and utility easements must be dedicated along all new lot lines. Three, any new development abide by the MRCCA regulations detailed in City Code Section 11-1001, including that a vegetation permit must be approved before any removal of vegetation can occur within the MRCCA bluff impact zone or significant existing vegetative stand.
Second?
There's a motion by Novak and a second by Butler. I guess I would just say to the neighbors, thank you for coming out to the planning commission. The planning commission did yeoman work on this, and we certainly listened to their concerns, but I, it seems like we're gonna agree with the planning commission on this one, but we'll see how the vote goes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And the motion carries, so, thank you, Mr. Patzner. Thank you. Item nine is to consider appeal of massage therapist license denial, maybe Zheng Ye Okay. All right, so we're looking for our city clerk, who'll provide an overview of the request and the reasons for the denial. Correct?
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, before you, is an appeal requested by the applicant, is, I want to say Suin or Suin. So the city has decided that through its code, the massage licensing, or massage therapist should be licensed for general health, safety, and welfare, and there is an established list of requirements that those applicants need to meet. We've gone through in the clerk's office, and we've discovered that there are some discrepancies, and so the license was denied based on the incomplete or inaccurate information, and it's listed in the memo there, failure to provide a valid current address as is required, incomplete names and addresses of employers for the preceding five years. There was an inconsistency with the provided certified transcript on the, for the schooling, and then clerk's staff was unable to, or unable to confirm the applicant's attendance at the Santa Ana Beauty College where the transcript is from. Further complicating the matter, we sent the denial letter to the address that was provided by the applicant, and it was returned by the post office. So we made a telephone call also over to the city of New Brighton where the address is, and we were told that that address does not exist. So that is the reason why we made the determination in the clerk's office not to grant the license. They do have the right to an appeal, and that is what we are here for tonight. We did take extraordinary steps in an attempt to notify Ms. Suin that she was going to be on this council meeting agenda, but we were also provided with an invalid email and a telephone number that is answered and hung up. So we did contact the salon and asked the salon to ensure that that person was notified that their appeal would be, and we got reassurance from the salon owner that she would let them know. I don't see the applicant in attendance, but this is their opportunity to provide you with information that may clarify or provide enough information that would make us change our mind on that, but I'll turn it over to them if they are here.
Let's double-check first. So is the, is this person, is the applicant here? Is this applicant here? No. Okay.
One other thing I would note, if I may, Mr. Mayor, should the council decide to uphold the city clerk's denial, the applicant, there's nothing in our code that would prohibit them from applying again should they get their paperwork in order and provide a complete application. We would take a look at that and then make that determination at that point.
All right.
Your honor?
Councilmember Novak?
I move to uphold the city clerk's denial, finding that the applicant failed to provide valid current address as required by City Code Section 5-2906, sub 2, sub A, provided incomplete names and addresses for employers for the preceding five years as required per City Code Section 5-2906, sub 2, sub D, provided a transcript with an inconsistency, oh, good Lord, I can't talk today, inconsistencies due to a date discrepancy, and the city's inability to confirm the applicant's attendance at Santa Ana Beauty College.
Second?
There's a motion by Novak and a second by Butler. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, and we upheld the denial. Item 10 is to consider appeal of a massage therapist license denial, maybe Zheng Yang?
Mr. Mayor and council, I'll just save you the information related to the code, it's all the same for this one. We found similar inconsistencies in this application, as listed here, the incomplete names and addresses of the employers, an inconsistency with the previous addresses, and a timeline for attendance at the massage therapy program, an inconsistency with the date on the transcript, and the inability to confirm the attendance at Santa Ana Beauty College. Again, with this one, should the council decide to uphold the denial, there is the opportunity for the applicant to reapply once the paperwork is in order. With that, I'll yield to the applicant if they'd wish to speak.
Just before that, so let's just, so there's no waiting period. If we uphold the denial, they just need to get their stuff together and come back and reapply, there's no, there's no cooling off period or anything.
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. There's nothing in the code that has any sort of a timeframe on that.
Okay. Mr. Brody, did you lean forward like you were gonna say something?
No, your honor. I'm just gonna agree with the city clerk. Some of our other licensing provisions do have that sort of prohibition or a time prohibition for reapplying. Massage therapist is not one of them.
Okay, okay. So then what we will do is we'll open the, the ammo up for the applicant if they would like to come up and share their side of this. I guess I would just point out that if you just get your things in order and reapply, you might be ahead, but you're welcome to present the appeal.
I'm Chinese, so my English not really good, so.
Can I help her here?
Please do.
Thank you. Oh, you said I'm Chinese. First of all, she wants, thanks, everyone give her this chance to explain, there is some incorrect information on the application. You said, "I'm Chinese." You said, "I'm Chinese." You said, "I'm Chinese." You said, "I'm Chinese." The main consideration was the candidacy, the address, right? But she was pull her account out, that was 2018, wasn't 19. You said, "I'm Chinese." You said, "I'm Chinese." You said, "I'm Chinese." You said, "I'm Chinese." She was providing...
Listen, actually, you're revealing the us now.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
She, 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 she was, her massage school, she should be at massage school 2019 March, but she thought she was in Kansas for three weeks, 2019 March. But she just got distracted by herself when she fell out of the application. When, um, city clerk noticed that, pointed out, she did conform with her bank account. She wasn't in Kansas 2019, it was 2018. So, let me, uh, just, I wrote it down, just, I'm Chinese, you know? She was made mistake on that, on the application.
Do you understand that if you get all of your documents together, that you can just reapply?
Yes.
Okay. Because I, I mean, we're not exactly getting any evidence here that's gonna cause us to overturn a denial.
Yeah, I can't, I can't reapply.
What was that?
Oh, she, she, she really reapply.
Okay.
If got denied.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We still need a motion. You gonna do that?
Sure.
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Make a motion to uphold the city clerk's denial, finding that the applicant provided incomplete names and addresses of employers for the preceding five years as required per City Code Section 5-2906, sub 2, clause D, provided inconsistent previous addresses and discrepancies in the timeline listed for attendance at massage therapist program, provided... transcripts with inconsistencies in the dates, and the city's inability to confirm applicant's attendance at Santa Ana Beauty College.
Second?
Motion by Carlson, a second by Butler. Is there any discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Novak?
Ma'am, as a business owner myself in the city of Coon Rapids, I look forward to you reapplying and getting your business going here, and I wish you all the success, all the success in the world.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Who is that? Councilman Novak, Herbert Griscoviac?
Question for Ms. Lenzmeyer here on the city clerk. I just noticed, just an observation, that both of the applicants were in attendance at Santa Ana Beauty College. Do we find any anomalies or any issues with that college that-
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Griscoviac, that is one of the concerns. We don't just take the transcript, we call there to verify, and I've been unable to do that. We will try again.
Oh. We can't reach the beauty college?
We reached the beauty college, but we are given an email, a private email that's not related to the school, in order to confirm attendance, which sums up a red flag, so we'll need to work through that.
Okay, yeah, just some observation, thank you.
All right, any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
I do encourage Ms. Yang to get everything in order and then, and then try again at the same time. Ms. Lenzmeyer, I applaud the work that you do in vetting our licensees and our applicants. We vet people very carefully who do business in Coon Rapids, and so I applaud you for your efforts. And Ms. Yang, just come on back and get some, get your information together.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 11 is to adopt resolution 25-79, accepting grant funds from the Coon Creek Watershed District and approve the water quality grant cost-share agreement. Mr. Hammer, you've been so quiet this evening. Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Council. This is something we have discussed on a few different occasions. This is the culmination of a couple more grants, so we're considering two grants really in one agreement here, the first being completion of a funding package for our enhanced street sweeping. We received one previously for purchasing trauma equipment. This one covers the additional costs for that, this one covers the costs for the contracted street sweeping, which pretty much leaves it's just staff time to administer the program and make sure that we hit those areas correctly and fill out the proper notifications and reimbursement. So the second is a CCTV truck. We previously discussed potentially the city upwards of $110,000 on that. This brings $75,000 forward for that to go with the PCA grant for 225, so we're up to a total of $300,000. That leaves about $35,000 for the city to fund on that as well. So we've talked about both of these a couple of times, we've been before you with a few other grants. This just helps kind of leverage one matching grant against the other and get us a pretty good deal to improve water quality as well as groundwater through I and I looking through our sanitary sewer. So great for the environment, great for the city, good, good program, great support from Coon Creek Watershed District. So I'm happy to answer any other questions Council may have.
Any questions for Mr. Hammer on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Butler?
I move that council adopt resolution 25-79, accepting grant funds from the Coon Creek Watershed District and authorize execution of the water quality cost-share agreement.
Second?
Motion by Butler, second by Geisler. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Mr. Hammer, great job going to get all the, all the grant funding for all these projects. Really appreciate the hard work there, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Geisler. I'll give this one to Josh and Danny. Got a good team.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Griscoviac down there?
Definitely want to adopt this resolution accepting these grant funds, but did, did we already order that truck? Because we already authorized the purchase of it, correct?
Councilmember Griscoviac, yes, you had already authorized the purchase of it. We're still looking into some of the software items related to it. We want to make sure it's a full package, so we haven't pulled the trigger on it yet, but we're getting close.
And the only reason I ask is at the, at the meeting in the park, they were kind of showcasing that this piece of equipment is coming, and I was just wondering if it would be ready for the next meeting in the park to kind of show what this little unit is and the camera that goes with it.
Probably won't receive it till later in the fall.
Got it.
Okay.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are up to other business, or I'm sorry, open mic. Anybody here to address counsel for open mic this evening? Open mic, all right. Where I don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are to other business. There's a lot going on over at the ICE Center right now. Boulevard Plaza is buzzing, the Fourth of July carnival starts tomorrow, runs Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and we're waiting to see what Mr. Erickson's going to put up this, for a promotion, but, ah, there we go. Wednesday, noon to 10, carnival food trucks, lion's tent, and pull tabs. 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. Wednesday is the Coon Rapids High School All Class Reunion. 6:00 p.m. is the parade, begins at 111th Avenue and Mississippi Boulevard, right at, by the Fire Station 3 in Anoka Ramsay Community College. There's no parking near the route there, and you can watch live on CTN 859 and YouTube. The Mississippi Elementary is a pretty good spot, too, to catch it when it goes by. 6:30 to 10:00 p.m. live music by Vitamin J. 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. rocky meet and greet, and 7:30 to 9:00 is firefighter bingo. Does that start earlier than that? I thought it was like 5:30. All right, here we go. We're up to Thursday, kind of the same thing. Carnival food trucks, lion's tent, pull tabs, firefighter bingo is 4:00 to 9:00. 5 o'clock is the Coon Rapids Police Association Bags Tournament. 5:00 to 11:00 is the car show, and 6:30 to 10:00 is live music by Arena. And then Friday is the Firecracker 5K, you must pre-register for that. 9:15 a.m. is the Kids Sparkler Dash, which is free. Noon to 7:30 Carnival Midway. Noon to 10:00 food trucks, lion's tent, pull tabs. 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. a public safety meet and greet. 6:30 to 10:00 firefighter bingo. 7:30 live music, the rocking Hollywoods. And 10:00 p.m. the greatest fireworks show you'll find anywhere. No, it's a heck of a fireworks show at 10:00 p.m., all off the roof of the Fire Station 3, which is cool in itself. So, yeah, it's a lot going on, it's going to be a great time.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
So this celebration's been going on for dang near 70 years. We're going in the 50s on it. It's been in different places, but it's been going on for about 70 years. Just want to point out that while with this going on, we will not have a concert in the park this week.
Right, no, no farmer's market on Wednesday and no concert in the park on Thursday night. And, yeah, this, when, when we moved this from St. Creek Park, because it was going to be completely refurbished down to the Boulevard, we got a lot of pushback, and it's like, all we did was move it back to where it came from, you know? It started out down in Coon Rapids Boulevard.
Yep.
Actually, back then it was Highway 10, though.
Yes, yes.
County Road.
By the Red Owl Family.
Oh, you're right. You're right.
Mr. Mayor, kind of by that Red Owl Family Center Mall?
Yep, yep. All right. All right. Yeah, Councilmember Armstrong?
Really quick, like, I appreciate whoever put in the, the information packet, the permanent location, because I get asked, when's it coming back to St. Creek? It's, to the best of my knowledge, permanently located where it is now.
Yeah, well, you put $6 million into a sporting, sporting facility, and it's really hard to run midway equipment over the top of that. Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Geisler?
And just a reminder for the Ward 4 folks, road closures for the parade and for folks coming to see the fireworks, traffic is always slow, take your time, get there early, be ready for a delay out, please be patient with everyone. Doesn't need to add any more chaos to the, all the people coming in and coming out, so please enjoy responsibly.
And a shout-out to the reserve officers that are going to be there every single day dealing with this.
Reserve officers, the explorers, and all of them.
Deputy Chief Jacobson, how are things looking over there for security, for the police, for everything?
Mr. Mayor and Council, we are all ready to go. Excited to see everybody out there this weekend for a safe and fun time.
All right, very good. Okay, well, is there any other business to have before council this evening?
Move to adjourn?
Hang on, we have one more meeting in the park, right?
We do?
Yes, Mayor, and Council, we do have a Summer in the City meeting at Park Side Heart on July 22nd, so we got a couple of weeks before that will occur, and we'll have one more regular meeting in between, but one left.
Okay, very good, thank you. Now, go ahead, Councilman Novak.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Novak, second by Butler to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
To adjourn.